Good evening and welcome to this regular meeting of the Kingman City Council on Tuesday, July 20, 2021 at 5:00 PM. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Present.
Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mello. Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Samley.
I'm here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join me standing for the invocation by Dennis Cronkite of College Park Community Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join me in prayer if you would, please. Our great God and Heavenly Father, we are thankful tonight to be able to gather it in your name as we invoke your favor upon this meeting. Father, we want to thank you for a rain already that we've been receiving today. We certainly know and you know how desperately we need it, so we are grateful for it and we give you thanks for that, for the very fact that we're able to be here tonight. You've given us that health and that touch upon our lives. And so, Father, we will pray your blessing as the council meets, things are discussed, decisions are made. We pray, God, that your favor would be upon this body and our city, things that go on here. Pray that we'd ever look to you, knowing that though we make plans, ultimately it is you who allow them to be carried out. And so, we ask for your favor on all that happens tonight and as we move forward as a city. And we ask for your grace to shine upon us. And so, we thank you in the name of Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First order of business this evening is the call to the public. Comments, those who wish to address the council should fill out the request forms in advance, and action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group, and they should last for no longer than three minutes. And because this is a hybrid meeting, people had the opportunity to submit comments by email or request a telephone call in. Did anyone do that, Ms. Annie?
Madam Mayor, we did not have anybody submit written comments, nor did anyone request to join us via Zoom tonight. We do have three members in the audience that have requested to address council, and I just wanted to take a moment to note that Councilmember Mello has joined us this evening.
Thank you. Welcome, counselor. Okay, the first person to address the council will be Mike McAvoy. Please come forth and address the councils with your name and your city of residence.
Mike McAvoy, live in Kingman. Mayor, two weeks ago, you refused my continuation of my presentation and stated, "We get it." You spoke for each council member, yet two non-council individuals, Mr. Cooper and Mr. Foggan, met me in the hallway in addressing my concerns. These are special individuals that we need to applaud as they want to help individuals making Kingman their home. Years ago, a man's word was his bond. Unfortunately, the trustworthiness of people diminished and the contract was born. Contracts replaced the old way of doing business. Tyler Angle has been notified about his company, Angle Homes, breach of contract, but refuses to complete the contracts of many individuals in Kingman. The trustworthiness of Tyler Angle is worthless unless he starts making customer satisfaction a priority. I believe this council can have a say in how Mr. Angle operates his business in this town. This is a subject of citywide concern. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Sean Savage.
Hello. Sean Savage, city resident, administrator, Kingman Lodge 1704. I'm here to follow up from our meeting last month concerning the water for the schools. I spoke with Charles Lucero from the school board yesterday. Their drinking fountains are going to be nonexistent, basically, and he said to me they got bottle refilling stations. The key to that word is "bottle." Are you going to have the kids have to buy bottles? The easiest thing is to have bottled water delivered to the schools. I'm asking you, did you guys discuss this after my presentation last month? Where?
This is not an interactive part of the meeting.
Okay, well, I'm just, how would I need to present this better, then?
Mr. Cooper.
Because school's starting.
Mr. Cooper.
He can just make a presentation. You can't discuss.
I know we can't discuss it. I think this could be, he could meet with me or make a, I would just suggest making a meeting with me or with the.
The city manager.
City manager. That would be the best way. We cannot discuss during a call to the public.
Oh, I'm not asking to discuss. I just didn't know if you discussed after the last meeting. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Steve Robinson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Councilman. This is going to be part two of last week's, yeah, two weeks ago's discussion about the budget and finances. We've had almost a $9 million increase in revenues from 2019 to 2021. In addition, according to the latest budget that was approved, there's $5 million excess funds from 2021, which means your cash in the bank will be close to, if not over $30 million, which will be over 100% of the budget approved for 2022, which I think the expenditure budget was 28 million, or 27 million, no, 20, with, 32 million was the budget of expenditures for 2022, but for 21, it was only 27 million actual expenditures. I point this out because we're going to be discussing about how to raise another $6,000 to $700,000 in revenue, and we've added so much money to the financial status of the city that we need to stop looking at how to raise more money, but how to manage what we have. Another section that I didn't cover in detail last week was, or two weeks ago, was the fact that there are things called internal service funds. Those are funds, as you well know, that one department provides services to another. You have over $7 million in, there's over $6 million in reserves according to the last audit. The city of Bullhead stopped, well, the city of Havasu stopped accounting for any internal service funds because it's inside the government. It's passing from one hand to another. By contrast of the city of Bullhead, they only have enough reserves for the insurance accounts, $300,000, $400,000 at the most, and we have over $6 million in what I call slush funds for the internal service funds. When you add that, because those are general fund accounts, to the 30 million you're going to finish this year with, you have over 36 million, about 125% to 135% of the budgeted or the actual expenditures last year that you show. One last thing, you showed for 2020 that in the budget preparation for 2021, that you ended up with revenue of $30 million. In fact, the audit that came out six months later said you had $3 million more than that. This year, not including the 27 or the 3.2 million for CARES Act, you have 37.2 million. How much under the actual figure will that be? We need to be more accurate in our estimates so the people know if you've got too much money for what we need. Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is the consent agenda. Matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, and if discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. This evening, I'd like to actually remove item G from the consent agenda, not to discuss, but it will be brought back next month. Mr. Cooper has asked that that be removed so that they can add backup for the public. So, okay, and other than that, would any counselor like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through H, with the exception of G.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent.
Thank you, Counselor Walker. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Signs G. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. I've been asked to move the item B of old business to the, make that first, and so if the council does not have an objection, we'll go ahead and, on the old business, begin with item B, which is ordinance number 1928, amending the Kingman Municipal Code to create Chapter 11 Development Fees. Arizona Revised Statute 9-463.05 allows a municipality to assess development fees to offset costs to the municipality associated with providing necessary public services to a development, including the cost of infrastructure improvements, real property, engineering, and architectural services, as well as financing and professional services required for the preparation or revision of a development fee, including the required land use assumptions and infrastructure improvements plan. After holding multiple public meetings and hearings and receiving public input throughout the development fee adoption process, on June 15, 2021, council directed staff to draft an ordinance adopting development fees. Staff recommends council adopt ordinance number 1928, amending the City of Kingman Municipal Code by creating Chapter 11 for development fees. Manager Foggan, I, oh, I see that you're on Zoom, but I see that Director Moline is already at the podium.
Yeah, perfect.
Shall I just turn it, I think I'll just turn it over to Director Moline.
Okay.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. We have Ben Griffin with, on with us this evening, and I appreciate you moving the agenda item ahead. He's actually on a family vacation, and so we were hoping to get through this item. He said that he does, he may have some difficulties technologically this evening, so he, I don't believe he's going to share his camera, but hopefully he'll be able to share his screen. Ben, I'm going to turn it over to you in just a second when he's, when he's finished with his presentation, which is just a couple of slides, and it's really just to share the fees that you gave direction to us on calculating. When he's completed sharing those fees and the methodology behind that calculation, I will quickly review a couple of items in the ordinance and then certainly open it up to any questions that you all might have. Ben?
Thanks, Tina. Mayor, Council, you know, thanks for having me tonight. As you've said, we have, we've seen these fees, you know, many times, so I'll move quickly through them. You know, we are at the July 20 meeting, so you may choose to adopt the fees that I will show you. I have a couple of slides. Those fees, based on Arizona law, may not go into effect in under 75 days, so we are showing an October 4 date for the fees to become effective if you adopt those tonight. So, what you see on the screen right now, these are the fees that are shown in the report based on discussions last time. It was the desire of council to show the fees at 100% for fire, 100% for police, and then the remaining parks and street fees essentially have those where it makes the total fee 50% of what we saw. So, this is what that ends up looking like. Again, fire and police would stay at 100%, and the parks fees and the street fees would be adopted at 34%. So, what you're seeing on slide four, this echoes what you see in the revised report under the council-proposed fees. So, I'm available for any questions or comments based on these council-proposed fees that you would adopt tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, is that Counselor Samley?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead.
I did have a question, and just for clarification, as was discussed at the last meeting, we were going to collect these fees and put them into the categories according to percentages. How does that affect the spending of these? Are they spent according to percentages? Does that have nothing to do with it? I just, I feel like there needs to be some clarification that because we're collecting 100% for fire, 34% for parks, 100% for police, and 34% for streets, that will the funds be allocated and spent that way? Could you please clarify?
Yeah, great question. So, you will have separate impact fee accounts for each necessary public service, so fire, parks, police, street. And so, as you collect the fees, you will split them proportionately into those separate fee categories. One thing to keep in mind is that because you're adopting parks and streets at less than 100%, you're only going to be funding 34% of those incremental park and street
Go ahead, Director Moline.
Thank you for that. That is to my point, that parks and streets are not going to be allocated as equally as police and fire. So, thank you.
Okay, did you want to add something, Director Moline?
I wasn't, I was going to add something, but Councilwoman Samley understood what Ben was saying, so I don't need to add anything further.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions for Ben? Thank you so much. Okay, Director Moline, do you have more that you wanted to add?
Yeah, I want to actually talk a little bit about the ordinance and specifically two items that are incorporated into Chapter 11, the development fees part of our city code. And one of those happens to be that in the motion that was made on June 15, there was a request to have a review of the fees after two years. And so, in the code, there is actually, it's actually in statute, that requires us to complete a biannual audit, which must be conducted by an external third party, so not Tischler-Beis, not city staff, it must be done by an audit firm. And they're not only reviewing the development fees we collected, the methodology we used, they're also looking at the, any inequities that the development fees were charged. And I know that Mr. Pennington's here this evening, and he has had a lot of concern throughout this whole process about the inequities, and so part of that audit process is to ensure that that doesn't happen. And that report is supposed to be brought back to the council through the public hearing process, and so it will be shared with you and the public. And I wanted to be sure you knew that that part of the motion was included in our code because it's not in the ordinance part. So, just, just to assure you and to assure our stakeholders that, that we are, that we are going to be compliant. And that's it. So, at the end, ultimately, what we're looking for is adoption of ordinance number 1928.
Thank you. If there are no further questions for Director Moline, we have one person signed up to speak on this item, Steve Robinson, on the adoption of ordinance 1928.
Councilman, Mayor, I would respectfully request that you reject this motion, and here's the why, the biggest reason why. Your sales tax revenues from 2020 to 2021 went up $6 million. That's almost 10, in fact, that's about 10 times what this will raise this year. So, you're getting already $6 million increase just in sales tax. There's so much you already have on the books for revenue, the increases. Like you said, you went up $9 million in revenue from 2019 to 2021. This last year's revenue was 37.2 million. When it was 28.7 million two years ago, that was the highest ever in the city's history. I understand what happened between 2009 and 2015. I went back and I reviewed every financial report. While the county never lost a dime, they never went down in revenue, the city went down $5 million. So, I know what the city went through in that time period, but we have more than recovered in the last five, seven years since 2014. And it seems like what is always the initial response, like it was nearly three years ago, let's raise more taxes. We need to have street funding. We need to have capital improvements. When you have as much money in the bank and when you have money that's already increased in revenue, it's the taxpayers' money. You need to recognize that. This original approval or proposal was $1,157 per unit for parks and rec. If half, over half of our people are over the age of 65, that we're spending too much money. That's why I'm glad it did drop down to 34%. But I'd have rather seen streets stay at 100%. But this is, we've had such an increase in revenue over the last several years, especially in the last two years, and this past year was supposed to be terrible because of COVID. COVID made it bad for our residents. People lost their businesses. People lost their jobs. People could barely survive. I know I have friends all over the city, the county, and over the world that have really been hurt, but government has not been hurt. In fact, governments have been doing very well because of money provided by the federal government from deficits. So, I encourage you to take a serious look, those of you that voted yes on this in, on the 15th, that you reconsider and say, "Maybe we don't need this right now. We need to tighten our belt." Well, not really tighten our belt, just use the money that we've raised since then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the floor for discussion by council if anyone would like to discuss this further and/or if not, I would entertain a motion regarding it.
Mayor?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move forward with this and approve the ordinance.
Okay, I'm going to accept that motion and ask for a second because then we can discuss after the motion is made. And I know the vice mayor wants to discuss it, so, and/or, please, if we get a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so I'll call for discussion.
Mayor, I appreciate Mr. Robinson's comments, and I know there's a number, it's a tug of war. A number of constituents have let me know that, no, they don't want this. A number have said yes. I really think, and we've made some major adjustments, cut what was proposed in half, and I really think that's a good compromise, and I would like to go ahead and move forward with this, too. I think there's a need for it right now. Do I like extra taxes and other taxes and other fees? No, I don't, but there's enough citizens that say, "Yes, we do need this support." So, I think we should move forward.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? I can't see the Zoom callers, so you just have to say something if you want us to comment.
Mayor?
Yes. Counselor Samley?
Hi. I just would like to, again, just make sure that we are evaluating the effectiveness of this ordinance in a year's time. I would like to see a report showing the sales tax revenue loss that went to the county as a result of this ordinance in a year. And again, I just can't support taxing an individual group of contractors in our area, and that's all I have to say about, about this. I'm glad to see there's a compromise, at least it came down, but I can't support this.
Director Moline?
Mayor?
Yeah, okay, City Manager Foggan?
So, it'll be impossible, the report showing sales tax loss is not possible. It just, growth paying for growth, this is not a tax. That's been stated several times. The report that we've committed to is a biannual report to show what this, what these impact or these development fees are being spent on, and in projects, obviously, we will be budgeting and talking about those on a yearly basis. But number of homes built in the city versus number of homes built in the county, there's, you know, we can show, I'm sure that we can show number of homes built, businesses built in the city, but how that's a comparison or helpful, I'm not, I'm not aware of a report that would be able to show sales tax lost in that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, then, I, Mr. Foggan, I look forward to your biannual report, and I hope it shows some good projects that this monies are being spent for.
I hope, I hope we're able to raise enough. I'll share the concern that's been shared before, and that is cutting in half the most expensive projects, the roads and parks. I would say that that's, that's been concerning to my team, but in an effort to find that compromise, we will do the best that we can with the money that's provided through this. But I will remind everybody that this is not, these are not fees that are being paid on a regular basis by our residents and by our businesses. It is growth paying for growth. So, as people move into the community, it's them, their opportunity to pay, their impact on our community as they move in.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. And I guess I would add that if there is no incremental contribution by those that are moving in, then those of us that are already here are carrying the full weight of expanding the services necessary to serve the people that are coming in. So, this is, to me, a reasonable thing. Also, it's so important that it's incremental. When we talk about fire and police, we know we need the new facility in the East Bench. We know that response times are an issue, and we know that whatever is collected with this impact fee will only address a portion of the real cost of that facility because it's going to cost a lot more than what, than the million dollars. If we can get a million dollars from it, the facility's $5 or $6 million, but this helps, it contributes to the incremental cost of expansion. So, I kind of see it that way, and so I do support going ahead with this. And so I do support going ahead with this.
Mayor?
Yes.
When impact fees were put in place before, it was unsuccessful, right, Keith?
Correct.
So that's kind of what we're doing again. We're attempting to put them in place, see how it goes. We're going to look at it again in two years, and if it's unsuccessful, we'll pull it again, so, right?
Yes, absolutely. We have that built into the ordinance that there will be a review. And I'm not exactly sure what unsuccessful means, as long as it is being collected and spent exactly on what the council has agreed to spend it on, especially during budget sessions, so.
Well, I.
I don't know what unsuccessful would be.
Well, Councilwoman Samley's concern is the, the building will go out to the county rather than the city, right?
Well, I guess, I, I think, I, I think that is her concern. But, you know, there's going to be building in the county, and there's going to be building in the city, so. Well, we'll see. We'll look at it in two years and see how it went. But at this time, we have a motion and a second, and if there's no further discussion.
I'd like to just add that. I'm glad we have a compromise. I mean, when we first started looking at this, it was like 9,000, then it came down to 4,400. You know, now we're down to, I think, something that's doable. We did have them in the past, they didn't work, they got rid of them. It was a bad economy, which, who knows where we're at now. You know, it's good today, but it could turn. But growth does pay for growth. If you guys look at it, our sales tax are up. Our sales tax revenue is up. And why do you think that is? It's the people moving in, paying, buying their new houses, paying the taxes on the new houses. So I get tired of hearing, growth is going to pay for growth. No, growth has been paying for growth. You know, the developers are paying for the streets, and yes, the city accepts them, and then after they're built, the city spec, so they're paying that cost. And we're paying the sales tax, so we are paying for the growth already. You know, I'm glad there's a compromise. I don't support this, but I, I think the council has spoken at the last meeting, and, and let's see how it turns out in the next year to few years.
Yeah, I think we could debate on the sales tax. I, I really think that the federal stimulus funds really made a difference in that. I think hindsight's 2020, of course, and we didn't know, but people stayed home, they did home projects. They did a lot of things. They bought vehicles to leave town. But, so I think this is not a year where you can say, I understand that this is going to be maintained for all time. I think that's probably not the case. So I think the decisions we're making are not short, short-term, they're for the long term. And as we know, the city lives or dies on sales tax. And it has been a good year, it's been a great couple of years through reasons that are probably, there's probably myriad reasons. But, but this, I think, is part of the stabilization of expansion. So are there any, Counselor Staley, did you want to add anything? I haven't heard from you. I don't think we've heard from you. Or Counselor Nelson?
Sorry, I have a bit of a cold, I, so I won't be speaking much tonight, but I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Okay, well, then I, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's take a roll call vote.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Mello?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Samley?
No.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Yes.
Councilmember Walker? Motion carries, 5-2.
Thank you. Okay, the next order of business will be the resolution number 5363, deferring the required street improvements for a portion of Camelback Boulevard with certain conditions. Nicholas and Amy Mann, Main, property owners, intend to construct a residence on a 196-acre parcel located west of the Kingman-Camelback subdivision. The property owners applied for a deferral of the required improvements per section 22E of the street policy. Resolution number 5363, if approved, would allow construction of one residence and accessory structures on the subject parcel, require access from Jagerson Avenue, and require that improvements on Camelback be completed if the existing parcel is divided into any new lots or parcels which adjoin Camelback Boulevard, or if a new subdivision is created. Staff recommends approval. Good evening, Mr. Wuggles.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This item has been before you a couple of times. The, the, the issue is that the Maines have an interest in building a residence on this 196 acres, which is located west of the Camelback subdivision. The act of building on this property would trigger the requirement to improve a portion of Camelback Boulevard that does not, that joins this property that the city does not maintain. This is under the street policy. In addition to that, to the 545 feet of furniture that they have on this street, there's also a requirement that those improvements be extended to the nearest improved roadway. In this case, it's the intersection at Christie Drive. So the full distance would be about 1,400 linear feet of curb-gutter sidewalk and half-street pavement. The applicants have requested a deferral of those improvements. The original condition of approval, one of the conditions of approval was that if Mr. Main had subdivided or, or created new parcels with any portion of this 196 acres, that act, that act would actually trigger the requirements for the street improvements on Camelback Boulevard. We've, based upon the comments that were made at the last council meeting, we've modified those conditions to now state that the trigger for the improvements on Camelback Boulevard would be if a parcel were to be created that abuts Camelback Boulevard, or if the property were to be fully subdivided, those would be the conditions which those improvements would be required. Otherwise, the improvements would not be required on Camelback Boulevard if you were to create, say, a parcel somewhere else on the property that didn't join that street. Mr. Main reviewed those comments, I'm sorry, reviewed those conditions of approval. He's in agreement, and we would recommend approval of the resolution. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wuggles. Are there any questions?
Mayor, I have one.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Rich, the, the question I have, and the way you worded that, says that we're, I, I guess my biggest fear is at this stage of the game, is that we're going to end up with dirt roads. We've got four houses right now just off the bank street being built with dirt roads, and developers got away. And here's my concern. He's got 196 acres up there. He's not just going to sit on that. He's a developer. You don't just sit on land. That's, that's a smart thing to, I mean, it's not a smart thing to do, to just sit on it. So are we going to get stuck with dirt roads in two years from now, or three years from now, because he's found a loophole and we've given him permission to have that loophole? That's my question.
Well, in the case of Camelback Boulevard, it would remain in, in the condition that it is today. If the property were to be, if a new street were to be created as a result of any further dividing of this property, that actually is one of the, one of the definitions of a subdivision under the state statute. So that would be a trigger for requiring further street improvements. But short of them, short of creating, of creation of new streets, what you have out there is pretty much what, what would continue to, to exist. I don't know if I, they answered your question.
Well, I guess I'll react.
You did. It's, we're fine. I'm, I'm just very concerned.
So could additional houses be built on Camelback without the street improvements?
Not if, if Mr. Main were to subdivide that property or were to create any parcels that abut Camelback Boulevard, that actually would trigger the requirement for the full improvements on, or the half-street improvements on Camelback Boulevard from the intersection all the way to its current end.
If it were subdivided for additional.
If it were subdivided, or if any parcels were created through the parcel process that abut that street.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, if I may.
Just go ahead, Counselor Samley.
Hi, Rich, I just wanted to commend you and your staff for finding a resolution and a happy medium. I think this is going to be good for the homeowner, and I feel like there is some protection for the city should he choose to split those parcels. So I appreciate the compromise that is before us.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Rich, thanks also. Can you give us a little more definition on accessory structures? And is there a limit on how many accessory structures you can put on a piece of property? And does it cover all loopholes? Is there ways to make sure that nothing, that there's those, those don't become livable, livable habitations?
Well, under the new zoning code, you can have, you can, you can have your primary structure. You can have a series of accessory structures. Among those are what's called ADU, which is accessory dwelling units. So in theory, they could have a secondary dwelling on that property. They cannot rent it out, they cannot, you know, they have to be used by the family that lives there, so. But they could build a garage, they could build a workshop, they could build, you know, a number of accessory structures, what you would normally consider an accessory.
Well, I know we're allowing casitas, for example, or whatever you want to call it.
Casitas, ADUs, yes.
Something like that, of course, that's a, that's a habitable dwelling.
Yes.
But there's no, is there any kind of limit on how many of those structures you can build?
You could only build one ADU. So one's primary structure and one ADU.
I just wanted to bring that forward for clarification so that we all are on the same page.
Yeah, and the ADU cannot be more than 50% of the size of the primary residence.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Does that have to be connected to the primary residence by a walkway or anything of that nature?
It does not.
It can be standalone?
Separate.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion regarding resolution number 5363.
I would like to make a motion that we approve resolution number 5363.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 5363. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Oh, wait. Who was the nay?
Counsel Nelson.
Thank you. Eyes have it, motion carries. We'll move on to new business. This is a resolution number 5368 approving a city street name change. The City of Kingman Public Works Department is requesting that an existing city street, Ella's Place, be renamed to West Andy Devine Avenue. The existing street was named Ella's Place as part of a city-approved program that allowed the street to be renamed annually through a raffle. The program did not continue past October 31, 2001. The street section is proposed to be renamed as it is a natural extension of the West Andy Devine Avenue, and staff recommends approval. Good evening.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Gary Lichness, staff. As the mayor mentioned, this is, staff is requesting approval of resolution number 5368, and we have a request from the Public Works Department to change the name of a, an existing approximately 200-foot section of street that's named Ella's Place between the Veterans Park and the museum, between, and, I'll show you on the map here. We have Beale Street on the north and Andy Devine on the south, and then Route 66 heading southwest. So that yellow section is Ella's Place currently, and it was named that a long time ago as a raffle, as the mayor mentioned. That program did not continue. And today, the Public Works Department has requested that this be changed to West Andy Devine Avenue as a continuation of that. We have noticed the different agencies and the Mahavee County Addressing folks have commented that that, that's a natural continuation of West Andy Devine, it makes sense. And so with that, the resolution that's before you tonight would change that from West Andy Devine to Ella's Place, and the property owners surrounding it have been notified per, per our policy. With that, I would answer any questions you might have. And then also, we have staff on, Jack Plante on the Zoom, if you have any questions for him as well. He's the person, point person from Public Works that requested this change.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Aye, motion that we adopt resolution number 5368, as stated.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thanks. We have a motion and a second to approve a city street name change on, per resolution number 5368. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. That's one of those things that must have seemed right at the time, but really didn't work out. Okay, we're moving on to department reports. And Bennett Bradley, thank you for being here to give an economic development report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I'd like to thank you for allowing me the time to come here tonight and talk to you about economic development. Very important topic within our community. So many of you might be aware that in 2018, the Economic Development Department went about putting together an economic development plan. And from that plan, over the last few years, we've been implementing various strategies, and we've had a lot of successes. One of the items from those strategies we wanted to go about implementing was an annual report. And so we set out to create this annual report, and the main topic is going to be of 2020. And so it's, it's kind of an exciting thing to take a look at in regards to, you know, a pandemic that we were faced with, and, you know, where our city came from in the end of 2019, and where we ended up at the end of 2020. Before I get into that, I'd like to let you know that we are continually working with the city manager on a monthly basis. We meet with him and talk with him about economic development. So our team is made up of not only the city manager, but we have Gary Kellogg, who's the director. He would have liked to have been here today, but he's on vacation, so. And then we do have two of our other members here. We have Sylvia Schaefer, and we have Josh Noble. They're with our retail and tourism departments. So, and then I, of course, I get, I get to focus, I get to help the whole department, as well as I'm out at the industrial park, working with businesses that are looking to locate to our park, as well as those businesses that are already here. So part of that annual, or part of that 2018 product that we went about doing, we, we put together a mission statement. And that mission statement is to improve the economy in the City of Kingman and surrounding areas, create high-paying, quality jobs, increase the per capita income, and improve the quality life of our Kingman residents. And the things that we work on, we work on, our team works closely with businesses throughout all phases of development process. We work with our partners to provide solutions and ensure that the transition to starting, running, and expanding businesses, or relocating a business here is a success. And we have been empowered by the city council. You guys have empowered us to do this. And, you know, prior to 2018, the city didn't have an economic. And, you know, prior to 2018, the city didn't have an economic development department. And I think, you know, the results of not having that over those years really put us at a disadvantage, and so it's been fun. Since I've come on to work with the city, it's been very exciting times. And then if you guys don't know, we do have some targeted industries that we go after, and that is healthcare, transportation, manufacturing, aviation, and tourism. So overcoming a pandemic. So throughout the year in 2020, you know, as COVID came in, it was, you know, these businesses were faced with different concerns, different issues. They didn't know, you know, who was considered essential. Who determines if you are essential? How do you communicate to the employees that are essential? How do you operate in a safe environment remotely, social distancing, using personal protective? What are the steps for, to file for the payment protection programs? These were all questions that got brought up during that time. And so our staff worked diligently to talk with these businesses and show them the different things that they could take advantage of. You can look at that unemployment rate in 2020, you can see as that March came and it came out in April, it jumped substantially. It went all the way up to 17%. And then slowly, very slowly, as things tapered down, by the end of December, it was down to 7.5%. Our department was responsible for implementing some programs, and we set out to do that. Sylvia worked diligently to implement a facade and improvement program, a utility assistance and grant, small business program to help offset some of those issues with not being open and not being able to generate revenue and still having those expenses. And then we, we put together a parklet and pedlet program. And so with those programs, we saw a lot of successes, and if you were to go downtown on a Friday night, many of those parklets are, those pedlets are full of people. The business licenses in 2019 compared to 2020, we didn't see a substantial decrease. There was a decrease, but it wasn't substantial. And then what was interesting is our population growth. You know, we did, and we are seeing a population growth that is coming. This is just to outline some of the ways that our, our community spends their money. So your median household expenditures is about 47,345 currently. We have about 13,618 households in Kingman. And this is, this is looking at just the incorporated areas of Kingman in this report. Some of our business location and retention and expansion projects that we worked on in 2020, they resulted in a five-year economic impact of about 229,837,000. That's over a five-year period, and local tax revenue impact of about $5 million. The companies directly and indirectly supported about 300 jobs. I will say that in 2021, we are already past what we did in 2020 in regards to new businesses and existing businesses expanding. Our construction permit demand remained at. So we, we had a total of 769 permits, and it was roughly a $77.6 million valuation in those permits. I wanted to look a little bit at the tourism because that was the industry that we were really hit with during this time. And when you looked at, we, we looked at the visitor traffic into the visitor center and the powerhouse. And again, you see that April, it just falls off. We did close up in April, and about mid-May, we reopened. But we didn't open at our normal amount of days per week. We had less days that we were open, and we slowly continued to open back up, but we still had, you know, you had to get the employees back. We dealt with the same thing that other businesses were dealing with at the time with our visitor center. When you look at the TPT lodging numbers, what was interesting about that is you do see the decline, but we have some months with some substantial increases. And so we, we looked at that and says, well, what was the cause of these increases during those time periods? And it was during that time that we did have some softball, baseball tournaments come into town, and you can see where that really helped in regards to those revenues in increasing that. The bottom is just our, our visits to our web, website. They are, you know, for instance, when you look at, in 2020, we maintained an average viewership of about 9,500 visits. You look at pre-pandemic, we were at 19,000 visits. And in 2020, 2021, we're seeing an average of about 13,000 right now. So the numbers are coming back up in a slowly, but, you know, we are seeing improvements. Some other noteworthy accomplishments that we saw, in May, the Office of Tourism hosted the virtual inaugural lighting event at the Kingman Visitor Center and the Route 66 Monument Sign. It was, that sign was a $40,000 investment, and it really showcases our community. We are in the process, there is a, a drive-through shield that is going to be going in. We'll be having a ribbon cutting of that here, I believe, next week or this weekend.
Saturday.
Yeah, so we're excited. We're seeing a lot of these infrastructure improvements in tourism and other stuff that I think are going to bring people to stop and spend some more time in our downtown area. We also focused on increasing the ability to be able to park buses, and we had some successes with that. During that 2020, we, we were also finalizing a branding campaign. And, you know, with that, you know, we have the new logo, we have all of the other items that we use to market our tourism industry. We use them on marketing to businesses that, you know, are, are looking to locate out at the park as well, so. We, we went through that process, we added new branding to all the websites, gokingman.com. We secured various domains, so we had a lot of things that we did on the backend to make sure that people were able to find us. We put together a 2020 Visitor Information Brochure fulfillment. We did a lot of social media. We did our billboards, and those were completed. We did all online display of advertising, all print advertising, and the Office of Tourism utilized the visual influencing platforms, CrowdRiff, to build a collaboration of visual assets around the new branding strategy that we had. So I wanted to kind of look into the future a little bit. So we're going to continue to market land out at the Kingman Industrial Park, and we have had a lot of success. We currently have land sales that we've completed over the last few years, and we currently have land sales that we're working on right now for substantial projects, and so we hope to make those announcements soon. We're working with the FAA and, and the Kingman Consultants on an 1,800-acre land release. The goal is to have that completed by the end of this year. We're also working with our partners and providers to improve broadband and fiber, not only at the industrial park, but throughout the city. And so we are having conversations with local providers, as well as out-of-state providers, about the potential for locating their fiber industry here and expanding our fiber capabilities within our homes and within our businesses. So we're going to continue to focus on bringing travel back, and we're going to start to be able to attend these trade shows as the opening, opening up of the economy and the ability to go to meetings happen, we're going to be able to do that more. We're going to continue to build our content and our libraries, making sure we have all the data necessary for businesses to make their decisions as they locate. We'll continue to assist with and coordinate special events. You know, as we come out of the post-COVID, we're going to install permanent Route 66 drive-through sign that I just mentioned a little bit ago. We're going to support Kingman businesses recovery and assist with various small business incentive programs. We're going to go after new retail. We're going to look to attract retail and restaurants. We're going to continue to work with our various partners, like the Mojave County Economic Development Department, the Kingman Area Chamber of Commerce, Arizona At Work, MCC, and Local Arizona First. And then we're going to work with our downtown businesses, and we're going to continue to work on that. I did, we do have the final report, and so I brought enough of these for everybody here to have one of these. It's, it's a lot longer than this presentation. There's a lot more in this, so, you know, we're very excited for this report, but I'm probably going to be more excited about 2021 because I really feel like it's going to showcase a lot of improvements. So with that, are there any questions?
I'm not sure that I have a question, but I want to thank you, Bennett, and the whole team that's here. You have only been a department for a few years, but you've made a tremendous impact in this city, and I really want to just express appreciation to all of you, and especially this past year has been tough for businesses. And so I know that you've been there with the chamber and with all the partners you mentioned, working hand in glove to, to make sure that they had all the information and support we could give, so really appreciate that. I guess I do have a question. You didn't mention the impact of the interchanges or the Rancho, which may be looming in our future, hopefully. Are you getting a lot of interest expressed in, from the industrial sector regarding location here due to that?
When we do, when we are talking with them, we do bring that up. You know, if it's not, if they don't necessarily know about it because they're in a major site selection process, that is one of the key components that we bring up as a positive that this is why they should consider us because they're going to have this other access point to the I-40 for their business to be able to come in and out of that industrial park. And we also talk about the 1,800 acres and, and, you know, just the synergies of other businesses that will be coming because we will have, you know, the additional land that we'll need to expand.
Thank you. Anybody else? Did you have a question? Nope. No one online? No one? Well, thank you, Mr. Bradley. It was.
Thank you.
Great information. Thank you. Okay, and the next report, I'm very happy to say that we have Mr. Tom Dorn and Cole Labera here from Tom Dorn Policy Group. Oh, Colleen, are you going to speak? We're going to start with you, Tom. We'll let you, we'll let, we'll let you lead this show.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Great to see all of you as always, and first of all, I don't know if Bennett, you were on the call this morning? The AED? Well, anyway, yeah, we were on the AED, Arizona Association for Economic Development presentation today because we represent them, and we told everybody that we're going up to Kingman, and Bennett got a lot of praise, especially from Kerry, the executive director, so. Congratulations on being a leader there, so. Anyway, well, thank you for having us, and Cole and I, I know we're the only thing standing between you all and the Suns game, so we will speak quickly but give a thorough summary of the legislative session. So I. Is this it? Oh, here we go. Oh, just right here, the mouse? Right here, the clicker there? Okay. All right, well, thank you for having us, and we're here to, to talk about the 171-day legislative session that took us all the way to the end of the fiscal year, and it was a good session for most parties, including cities. I would say at the end of the day, when you walk out with 3% higher in state shared revenues than you did since 1972, that's a pretty good day. And regardless of where the economy goes, up or down, that is something the cities, including Kingman, will always be able to have. I don't see that going backwards ever. So anyway, just a few pictures to kind of let you know that we, this is what we dealt with. A closed Capitol with fences around, I mean, the fences eventually came down, but, you know, I think I testified a total of three times on bills at the Capitol because it just was, you know, you had to be there, and some chairs wouldn't let you in. So it was just that kind of session. But, you know, our testimony on Zoom, of course, but in person was just very different. Is this a right click? The what? Oh, the keyboard, okay. There we go. Colleen is the captain, but we're, we work for Colleen and Ron directly down at the Capitol. This is our team. Same picture as last year. Composition of the 55th Legislature. Nothing has changed since the last time we talked to you when we were here on November 17th or 18th to talk to you about the, after the elections. This is where we're at, 3129 in the House and 1614 in the Senate. And as predicted, when we talked to all of you in November, every Republican in the legislature was the most powerful person in the state of Arizona. And, and it came down to two that would not let go. And so, as you know, and I'm sure you've heard from Representative Cobb and heard all about this, but it came down to two, Representative David Cook from Globe, and then Senator Paul Boyer from Northwest Phoenix, Glendale area. Those were the two that were the ultimate holdouts on the budget, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in detail. But we all knew this was going to happen, but the thing is, it wasn't just them. So when the, the people on the right also said, you know, while everyone was paying attention on the deal here, you had the people on the right that were saying, wait a second, we want to pay down more debt. You know, we want to pay down on our, on our state buildings, and what about some other, other items? So that's, that played itself out also. It wasn't just about the middle. It was the, the right two demanded some things. And somehow they got all the frogs in the, to stay in the wheelbarrow and got 3116 and one by the end of the fiscal year with seven hours to go. The number of days of the session, there are the stats of the session, bills introduced, and we had such a high number of bills introduced. You don't usually have this. I mean, we were like, my gosh, we're going to have House Bill 2999. Or what did they do? Are they going to start over at 01 or do 3,000? You know, and a lot of that was because COVID, the desire to, just in case, you know, we had an outbreak or something, at least we had a bill, the same, ran bills on both sides. So once you pass out of the House, pass out of the Senate, you go over, you substitute it and send it up to the governor. And so they were going to cut out the whole process of going through the House and then, then going over to the Senate or vice versa. So that's how, that's why you have so many bills and a huge number of bills signed into law. And as you know, on the, on the vetoes, the governor, when he came back from Republican governors, he vetoed 22 bills just to send a message to the legislature, which was really frustrating because they were working their tails off. It wasn't like they were sitting around, you know, not working on things, and he did that, but governors like to do that. Moving on into the budget, and I don't know if Representative Cobb has already spoken to you as a council or Senator Brawley or Representative Biasucci, but we'll just kind of.
Tom, we have not been briefed by any of our representatives.
Oh, okay. The person sounded like Ron, and sure enough, it was.
It was Ron.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Here is the budget and just short of 13.8 billion. And those of you that have been around Arizona for a long time, to see a, a budget in that, you know, it used to be five, six billion dollars and it's just amazing how our state has grown. And the revenues, what we all have to be grateful for and the foresight in finally getting it done was Arizona, you know, with the Wayfair versus South Dakota decision that came down with on sales tax revenues online. Because COVID hit, people, they sat around their house, they played games, they got, did whatever they did and they shopped. And so, that's why the revenues were high. And if we did not do that the year before, we would be hurting when we couldn't go out and stores were closed and things like that. So, some good foresight there to get that done. And it's nice to see this line, we always like to show this line, this, this whole thing, because back in the old days, when we used to have, you know, mid-year budget cuts, if you remember that back in the 2000s, you know, oh, we've got to cut state agencies and everything now. Well, that, we, we moved away from that when, you know, the late, great Senator Carol Springer of Prescott, she was the one that really led in trying to do three-year forecasting. And so, ever since then, we've had these lines that have kind of stayed together and that, that's a good thing. So, no, I don't remember a mid-year budget cut for many, many years. I just wanted to show you this, just so people, the whole purpose, so you see the pie and this is general fund. And I, these numbers may be off because it says 11.9, so I don't know if that was last year's, but I do want you to know at least for purposes of seeing the pie, where money goes. Because a lot of people you hear that we don't put enough money into education. Well, we put over 50% of, when you put universities, school facilities board, all of that together. We do have over 50% of our general fund money does go to education along with other services. Budget highlights, you are all well aware and I know I started with it, the 18%, but as you all know, that the, the governor and the Republican majority down at the House and the Senate was very much interested and committed to offsetting the unintended and negative impact of Proposition 208 on small businesses. They wanted to somehow create a solution that did not hurt the education community by taking away from the 3.5% for earners over 250,000, single or half million as a couple. So, the desire was to reduce, to compress the classes for taxes and compress and, and reduce the number. Yet, so the higher earners are more at 1%, but they still pay that 3.5%. So, the 3.5% does go to education as intended. And it's, the education is a grant program. It doesn't go into the base level. It's part of the way it was set up, the way it was written. So, it's different than just a straight money to education for everybody. But in doing that, it had negative impacts and you all know this and I'm repeating things you already know, but it had a negative impact on state shared revenues. And as we already discussed, in 1972, the people voted to, instead of having income taxes at the city level, the voters of the state of Arizona constitutionally put in place that the state shall collect the income tax and share it, share the revenues with the cities. And so, it was 15%. But so, the big negotiation that Colleen and Ron and all of us were working on, along with the League of Cities, was to get that 15% as high as we could. I mean, there were talks in the beginning, 21% and, but I think at the end of the day, to get 18 was, was a good thing because personally, up to the very end, I was still thinking 17.5 or something, but then when that came through at 18, and that's a situation, I've been in enough of these budget negotiations where you see, they, they were always holding that card and that's where they ultimately were going to go, but it's not till that button is being ready to be pushed, green, that they'll say, okay, we'll do 18, let's do it. We've got a deal? Sure. So, that's what happened. And like I said, if you, as a city, I would feel good moving forward because, and I'm reiterating that one more time, you'll always have that 18%. Some other major items that we just put in here with regard to the budget, I know that's down in central Arizona, I-10 widening, the competes fund, Arizona competes fund, that is something the Arizona Commerce Authority uses for closing deals. Tourism, the forest products was a big deal. I know not here, but that was a big issue down at the Capitol led by Salt River Project and others. So, with regard to some legislation, I'm going to talk about a few things and Cole's going to pipe in on a few. 1487, as you all know, or if you don't, I'll give you a quick overview. This was put in a few years back, I believe 2016 or 17, 16? Cole? Yeah. And it was in order, legislators wanted to be able to check, place a check on cities if they did something that they believed was out of line, to be basically honest, or out of, their worldview of the state, of how cities should run. And so, this was put in place and this year, Mr. Kavanaugh, John Kavanaugh, Representative Kavanaugh from Fountain Hills, and the real point of this, and I wish he just would have narrowed it to that, was police, civil review boards for police. That was what he was going after. But instead, this legislation casts a huge net that says, and you can read it yourself, any ordinance, regulation or, or other official action adopted or taken by a governing board or body. And here's the actual language on the next page. Yeah, from, this is the, this is the language, the change. This, this, in the Capitol letters on line 10 and 11 and 12, as well as down on lines 20 and 21, that was the language that has now been incorporated into the law. So, this was the bill and that it is now in law and will be effective on September 29th. So, personal opinion, it was as if you took a sledgehammer to a gnat. You know, if you're going after, if you're going after the civil, the review boards, mainly in Phoenix and Tucson, but we put all this in, written rule, written regulation adopted by any agency, department or other entity of a county, city or town, you know, how would this impact? And I guess, are we going to try to fix it before it becomes a problem? Or are we going to wait for a state legislator to complain to an attorney general that I don't like how their, you know, land use permit was passed in this community and the rules they used for that? And then it, then we have a problem and we have enough problems that we can go back and change the law. Hopefully, we can go back and change the law and really narrow the focus on what they were trying to get at. And there may be something that I'm not aware of, but from what I understand, and if you looked at Representative Kavanaugh's testimony on the floor, that's when he got very passionate and he said, I'm here to, basically to protect the police. And so, that was what it was coming down to. So, more on that at the league conference. I'm sure you'll get your, your full on that one.
Tom, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
So, the consequence, if they find that they, if they believe and it's found that you aren't complying in their perspective, that is the withholding of state shared revenues? Is that it?
Yeah, that's the ultimate penalty of the original legislation, yes. And that's not in here, we just put the language, yeah.
It's heavy.
Yeah. It's not, yeah, it's not. I mean, if you remember, Madam Mayor, members of the council, remember the, the plastic bag ordinance in Bisbee?
Mm-hmm.
That was the one of the, there's, I think there were a few more that were the threat of a, of a 1487 is what they call it, a 1487. But there may have been a few more and it's usually since, you know, the Tempeys and the Phoenix and Tucson, maybe Flagstaff. But we can, we'll follow up on that and let you know exactly where and if it's been used and implemented. Recall petitions. This, this has been put up by the legislature. It did become law and it just lays out some of the param, you know, within so much time, within four months, an elected official, they cannot be, a recall petition cannot be accepted for four, four months, but for a legislator, within five days. So, that is, that was a major bill that passed and affected cities and towns. Telehealth, sponsored by Representative Cobb. This was a huge issue down at the Capitol, many stakeholders involved, you know, with regard to telemedicine. And it is something that has helped rural Arizona significantly during the, during the, during the pandemic and is here to stay. And it's been helpful and, and prior to COVID, you know, not all insurance companies, but it was something that the docs and, it, it wasn't embraced fully, but then I think we were forced into it in the insurance industry as well as the hospitals and the doctors and all those insurers, everybody related to the healthcare system eventually embraced it. And Representative Cobb created a, a telehealth advisory committee, so anything that has, needs to be cleaned up, if anything, it'll probably go through that committee with recommendations to the legislature. And I'm sure Representative Cobb and others will carry the water on that to, to improve it even more. Cole, do you want to talk a little bit about Cole Handel's, things like this for the Arizona Planning Association? So, I thought maybe he can say a few words on these.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will try to make this brief. This was a bill that was put forth this year. Unfortunately, it did not pass, but the, the basic premises of the bill is to give cities and counties more control over, you know, abandoned buildings, blighted areas in their community. So, this is one that, that will definitely be back next year. It'll be talked about at the league. I had a long conversation with Tom Savage, the Legislative Liaison for the league. He said this would be a, a big one coming up, so look for more on this. Something that the Arizona Planning Association is also fully supportive, so I think we'll get there eventually, but you know, there's always this pull and tug between how much should cities be able to control and then how much does the state want to control? And then you have the federal government wants to control the state. So, you have all these weird juxtapositions. I'll go to the next slide. Tom, do you want to talk about rural broadband?
Sure.
A bill passed this year was House Bill 2596, rural broadband. So, although it didn't inject any money towards rural broadband, what it did was it gives, it gives Arizona and, sorry, I lost my train of thought there for a second, by Representative Cobb, it lets private providers install broadband along ADOT rights of way. There could be issues, unintended consequences on tribal land, things like that, but this is a big step in the right direction to getting broadband to, to all places in the state, especially rural areas. So, just another tool in the toolbox to help expand rural broadband.
As you know, thank you, Cole. And as you know, from Flagstaff to the California line, Representative Cobb was helpful and Senator Borelli and Representative Biassucci, all of them, in making that happen and to what, to what Bennett was talking about earlier. It's nice to know it's going to go right by the, the airport, so, and those intersections. So, as it goes down I-40, you guys can light it up with new business here in Kingman. Affordable housing tax credit, I know that's something that we've talked about. Housing has always been an issue that Ron has directed us to focus on. You know, there's the federal tax credit for affordable housing that it was established back several years ago in 1986. The Arizona Legislature decided to do a 50% tax credit in it, on this, in addition, 50% of the federal can be used as a tax credit at the state. So, this is a real good incentive for developers to, to, in building affordable housing in communities and, and it provides an incentive for them to get a tax credit to do so. So, on your housing needs, if there's anything there that's needed, that'll be helpful. Just a quick look into what is coming up and these are just a handful of, of the issues that, that are on our mind, that we thought that you might be interested in. With regard to ballot measures, as you know, whoever's in the majority, you know, is always wants to put, they want to refer, as you all know, referendums, a refer, referrals from the legislature, initiatives or initiatives of the people. And so, since the Republicans are in control, they're probably going to want to put some referendums that might help drive voter turnout. And so, we'll see where, what those may be in the next session. One thing that did get referred out of the legislature, to the complete surprise of the Republicans, was the DACA in-state tuition. You had Representative Michelle Udall from Mesa, who's the speaker's seatmate, dusted off a rule and forced something that was not going to end up being on the ballot for the reasons I've already said about voter turnout. And it ended up being forced, the Democrats and three Republicans joined and forced the referendum straight, the governor couldn't stop it, so it went straight to the Secretary of State. So, it's on our November 22 ballot, DACA in-state tuition. And so, so that, that is the one thing that is on the ballot as of right now. An initiative to repeal some of the people in the education community, not everyone, but some people have taken out an initiative to repeal the, the action that was done with regard to Prop 208. So, to undo it, to undo the tax and also the classification. So, it would basically undo the fix, if you will, for entrepreneurs and small businesses that the legislature just did. But a good thing for cities, it does not touch the 18%. So, the people behind the initiative, they're only getting ready to go after 208, the, what was done with regard to 208. And that, they want the wealthier people to not pay 4.5%. They want wealthier people to pay 8%. So, that would put us back up in like the top 12 states with regard to income tax. So, that'll be interesting to see what happens. They have to get those signatures done before the effective date of September 29th. And so, if they get enough signatures, that will then put it on hold until the voters decide in November of '22 whether they want that law to go into effect. And this is all const, directed by our constitution. Real quickly, if there's any specific questions on some of these issues, I know PSPRS has been addressed by some communities and refinancing and congratulations on that. And, and the governor, with all the federal money was able, the legislature was able to put a big dent in public safety for fire and police. Cybersecurity, with your situation that you had to endure, that's in ransomware and all these other things that are happening, the legislature is starting to talk about, what can we do, you know, as a state, for our state statutes, even though it's mainly driven federal level statutes, but what can be done there? Education is, education is changing. It's not so much how much the money is, what's acceptable delivery method? I mean, that's where rural broadband comes in to play, not only for telehealth, but also for education. So, the different delivery methods of education and how we fund education moving forward as opposed to just bricks and mortar. Elections, election integrity or whatever we call it, whatever comes out, if anything comes out of the audit and will the Republican majority of the legislature want to do something in a special session between now and the end of the year or do something in the regular session? That remains to be seen. Land use and management, I've wanted to bring that up because of wildfires. There's this growing sense of, we've got to do something different than what we're doing because we're starting to burn and you've experienced that with the Wallopis. And it's just taxation, that issue is more about if, you know, what if things turn out differently? What if the revenues, the chance we took on this tax reform, it didn't turn out the way we all thought it would? Or if it did turn out, that's great. But so, people are waiting, it's kind of a wait and see thing there. And transportation, then I want Cole to say a few things about water and, but transportation, the taxation for Maricopa County, that has to go back, the state legislature has to approve it. Will the rural legislators band together and say, okay, Maricopa County, if you want permission to go to the ballot for you, we want to get a little something out of this. So, it's going to be interesting to see what rural legislators do in order to allow Maricopa County to tax them. to see what rural legislators do in order to allow Maricopa County to tax themselves for their freeways. So all of those things, I think I tried to hit on all of them. Cole, why don't you say, since Cole is the, the water guy for the City of Kingman, down at the legislature, maybe say a few words on that, and we'll wrap it up.
Sure. This year, you know, I think election integrity and COVID probably took the cake for most talked-about issues, but I, I think next year we'll see a lot more water legislation. I'm sure we will see some of the bills that Representative Cobb introduced back, I'm hoping that rural management area bill comes back, something along those lines to give cities and counties, again, more control over their own water supply. You know, obviously, we're dealing with Lake Mead issues and, and deep cuts there as the lake continues to decline. And we're seeing, you know, first to get cuts are those farmlands. But cities have done a good job, you know, those cities who get water from the Colorado River have done a good job preserving their water. So I think we'll see various bills come, like we have before, some groundwater bills, hopefully, fourth priority water rights, all that kind of stuff. There's still a ton of litigation, but we work closely with Mojave County and High Ground, Yuma, La Paz County, we have all kind of coalesced around rural water and protecting rural water. So I'm cautiously optimistic.
Cole, I was attending the, I guess it's the governor's-
Water augmentation-
Augmentation and sustainability-
G-W-I-A-A-C, something like that.
Council, I, that's a long-
It's a long acronym.
That's what I think of that name.
Fair enough.
But I have a question. I think they were mentioning that in our budget for this year, for, for the first time, they put in a sizable amount, 200 million.
Right.
And part of that, I think, is for rural-
Right.
Areas. Can you speak to that a little bit?
I can't go into a lot of detail. I know a good portion was for Pinal County, because they are first to get cuts in the farming areas. But I did talk to someone from ADWR, and I don't know how that money is going to be dispersed, if it'll be dispersed for like projects, injection wells, or things like that. But let me go back and get a little more information for you and give you a complete picture.
That'd be great, because I think, when I was listening to it, I thought, I think we could-
Right.
Tap into some of that funding-
Absolutely, yeah.
For water projects here.
Yes, absolutely.
So to, so to speak, pun intended.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I know that some of that has to do with allowing, and I believe this is something Representative Cook held out for, for infrastructure, for return to drilling in Pinal County, you know, some ground. Yeah, I think there was some of that in there. And I do want to do one shout-out to the delegation again with regard to water. I know, Speaker of the House appointed Gail Griffin as the House Natural Resources Committee Chair. And she's a wonderful person, but she's also involved in the water issues with, she's a Realtor and from southeastern Arizona. And so various stakeholders have different influences on different situations. And so what we may have wanted to accomplish for Mojave County, and the City of Kingman, and the river communities together, as you know, Mayor, being on the letters and everything, it was difficult to move those things past committee. And maneuvering to get things done, at the end of the day, could have, could have happened, but at the expense of everything else. So we had, everybody had to pick their battles, and, and you should be very proud of your three legislators for how they managed all of that. Sometimes you live for another day. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have, or?
Are there any questions?
Apologize if we went on too long.
No, no, this is really important, and appreciate your being here.
Thank you very much for the privilege of-
Are there any other, oh, I'm sorry, let me just find out, on Zoom, is any, anybody like to ask a question? Not here.
No, that was very thorough, thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to continue to work with you, we greatly appreciate that. And hopefully, we'll see all of you at the League Conference, and look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and travel safely.
Thank you very much.
I requested a room right next door to this.
We'll keep, we'll keep our eye on your city manager.
Thank you. He doesn't look too threatened there. Watch out, watch out, Ron. Okay, next order of business is our announcements by Mayor, City Council Member, City Manager. Manager Foggan, do you have any announcement you'd like to make from afar?
Well, I am at the ACMA conference this week, so I'm excited to be learning some new stuff and bringing it back. I will announce, Bennett had covered this a little bit, but there is the Drive-Thru Shield, the Route 66 Drive-Thru Shield dedication ceremony that will be Saturday from 5:00 to 8:00. Want to make sure that everybody has that on their calendar, and should be a great event. And I just want to let you know that we're just wrapping up the Wallach Ranch Park shade structure and additional playground equipment, and we will be sending out an invite for ribbon cutting for that. I want to thank the council members and the mayor for their attendance at the golf course ribbon cutting, and that went really, really well, and we were happy to have support from you. So thank you for, for your support and your willingness to come out and participate at those. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Walker? Okay, Counselor Miller, Counselors Staley?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Counselor Samley?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Counselor Nelson?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing at all, thank you, Mayor.
My goodness, I only have two short things. One is reminder, twice city council on this 20th, at I think 11:30, it's a Zoom meeting, not the 20th, the-
27th.
27th. Is that right, Annie?
The 27th at 10 o'clock.
Okay, we're not having, it's all Zoom this time, no in-person. Okay, 10 o'clock, I've put it on my calendar. And finally, I attended Livewell Mojave, which was KRC and the Mojave County Health Department-led health initiative to set goals and, and, based on community input for improving wellness and addressing some of the health issues of our county. And one of the events that will take place, that is open to any one event that's interested, will be on August 5th at 8:30 at the Wallopice Campus. And that will be about a three-hour meeting, basically for Kingman to get community input on these wellness issues. So if you're interested in that type of thing, I think it was probably listed on the KRC website. And that's all I have. So at this point, are there any council requests for future reports or updates? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.